I call to order the meeting of the Monterey Select Board Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, here in Town Hall and remotely. I am the vice chair, president. Do not see Don White present for remote. Before we get into what's going on today, let me read from, let me just read the following, just to remind everybody as per the open meeting law. If you wish to speak during a meeting, especially since we have a lot of people here, please raise your hand in order to be recognized by the chairman. Please state your name for the record before you begin to speak on an issue. Regulation of participation by public at open meetings is specified as no person shall address a public meeting of a governmental body without permission of the presiding officer at such meeting, and all persons shall, at the request of such presiding officer, be silent. If, after warning from the presiding officer, a person persists in a disorderly behavior, said officer may order him or her to withdraw from the meeting. If he or she does not withdraw, they order an officer. And open meeting law does not require that public bodies allow public comment or public participation during meetings. That's according to the law. According to Monterey, we just say be nice. Be nice. I just want to say for the record, I am additionally recording this meeting. For what reason, I have no idea. Anybody else recording this meeting? Speak now.
I will call the meeting as well.
Okay.
I'll follow along with you and your group.
Great. Okay, good. So we've got multiple recordings of this meeting. First, we're going to take care of some pressing business, and then we'll get into the rest of it. The first one is we received an application for a police officer, the chief, to appoint Mitchell Hamilton as a police officer for the town of Monterey. His resume is included in the packet. Have you guys?
Yeah, I saw it look good.
Okay.
And over here.
Is it a one-year appointment?
Yeah.
Probationary.
And I should note that he, in addition to being, having good employment history with being a patrolman in, also seems like he's an avid skydiver, so we're happy to be able to use guilt in some fashion. All right, so I make a motion to appoint Mitchell Hamilton, a police officer.
For one year.
For one year. Second, having it done in second. Any comments from the public? This appointment? No? Because there's no comments from the public. I go, yes?
Yes.
Okay, and he is appointed to the, not to the girl. I make a motion to appoint election warden Aldis M. Lewin. And forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name. And that's on, sure, the first recommendation? We have the clerk here. Is that the first recommendation of the clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
That's for three years.
And that's for, is that a three-year appointment?
Yes, please.
Three-year appointment. So do I have a second?
Second.
I vote yes. Yes. Okay, so they're appointed.
Joan Griswold.
Perhaps she can work for the election as well. I, we have a request from, I believe, from the clerk to, for Aldis M. Lewin to also be appointed as election worker?
Yes.
Okay. And that's also for, is that for a one-year?
It's usually indefinite.
Okay, but we usually make, we can't make a one, so it's one year and then?
One year, yes.
Okay, so I make a motion that we appoint Aldis M. Lewin for as election worker. I vote, oh, do you have a second?
For one year, second.
For one year. Second, I go, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, the next, the next item on the agenda pursuant to, after the law, section 38, section 21A, the board is asking to, if the board is requesting a meeting in executive session, formally discuss the investigation report provided by Green and Hafer LLC as the investigators retained by the town to conduct an investigation regarding complaints filed against town employees. It is my understanding that the town employees that are, that have been, have been given notice of this and have the right to ask that, to make any kind of recommendation that the executive session held be in private or public session. Yes, sir.
Hi, Chris Hennessey, on behalf of Melissa Noe, we would request, to the extent that the meeting's going to be held to the director's character or her informant, that it be held in an open session.
As there are other, as there are other town employees that were noticed on this, do they have any specific comments on whether to have this an open session because your name may be discussed as well? You have to probably say it out loud.
I'm going to have it in open.
That Sean Klein says it's good to happen in open. Kevin Fitzpatrick says it's good to have it in open. I believe that it covers. Terry?
Open is fine.
Okay. Me, I'm named on it, so I have no problem in open session. Justin, are you named on it?
Yeah, I have no problem with open session. My question is, does this executive, what does this executive session notice? The same notice?
Yes. The exact same notice.
And did town council work in drafting the notice?
The notice was, was the same notice that was drafted by town council for previous meetings of the exact same event. Did you receive a copy of that notice?
Well, I have my notice right here.
Is there something on the notice?
Well, what the board agreed to do, from my understanding, on March 23rd, which is the next item on the agenda, was to individually to dispose of the complaints based on the factual findings and determine whether, if any administrative action was to be taken. And I'm not sure if this notice covers that kind of meeting.
So that's not, that's not my understanding of it. This is to discuss the investigation. There are obviously several parameters to that investigation, but nothing specific was ever set forth to be discussed?
Well, I only have draft minutes from March 23rd, but in my draft minutes, I have Attorney Mazur recommended to Steve that after the redactions are made and the reports are issued to the individuals who are named as the complaints, then the board should schedule further executive sessions to decide how the board wants to dispose of the complaints now that the board has accepted the investigator's findings. At that point in time, the board can really take whatever administrative action it wants or can close the investigation without taking any action. Mazur recommended that the board should vote on some level of administrative action or no action as they pertain to each specifically named individual. So I guess my question is, is, does this notice cover that, in another part of the minutes I have written, and it's draft minutes, but Attorney Mazur opined that generally the way that boards operate in these circumstances is an investigation report with factual findings and conclusions, and the factual findings are based off of the complaints that were filed against individuals. After the board determines whether the findings are substantiated or not substantiated, the board could determine a course of corrective action. Corrective action could include creating a new public center for an elected official in an open meeting, counseling an employee, putting something in an employee's file, reprimand, suspend, or remove from office. These actions would be something that would happen at another meeting. So, so does this notice allow any administrative actions to be introduced and or taken by board?
So what you've written, so what you've read are your recommendations from town council, but they're, but they're not a, they don't represent a discussion or a vote that the select board itself has made in order to have this particular session. He's giving us recommendations, and some of them are good recommendations, some of the recommendations, I don't think are particularly valid. But I'm glad that, but you know what, I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you brought that up.
There was a vote. Because these are the draft minutes right here. Which is the next thing that we could enter executive session for if we wish.
So Justin, I was, I was at all the meetings, there was no, there was no vote to have individual scheduled session. Let me, let me open this by making?
No, I don't think there was. I think there was an agreement by the board that that's how?
There was no vote by the board to do it, and there's, and there's where, where it doesn't. I understand, I understand what you're saying, but there was no official vote.
So I do think it would be the proper way to proceed. It was what was recommended by town council. And unfortunately, I feel that some of, there was the lady who came and spoke about dignity and just trying to relate that to this. You know, she emphasized the importance of understanding of giving the chance to explain people the chance to explain their perspective, their points of view, and accountability to take responsibility for one's actions and make a commitment to change hurtful behaviors, which I think is what could be accomplished. You know, we've had this discussion, which is why I'm surprised that we're having it again. Whether or not there was a vote, I think the vote was on to issue redacted copies of the report to each subject of the report. Because further meetings would happen with those individuals, I don't know why else there would have been redacted copies issued to each individual. And I'm afraid that one of the temptations to violate dignity is, you know, avoiding And I think that we should follow the, we should follow Attorney Mazur's advice that he provided multiple times throughout the meeting, and we should deal with, you know, the issues head-on fairly, appropriately, you know. At the level of the problems, we deal with them and respond at the same level, not anything undue, but I do think that's the proper way to proceed. I've said that before. I thought that was the agreement of the board. That's not your understanding. And I'm afraid that if we don't, we're not really dealing with issues head-on.
So let me, so let me, so let me speak to that. Let me speak to that, and let me speak to the reason why I think everybody here is chosen to spend their Wednesday nights with us. And I wrote it down. I don't want to take a chance of anything of being misinterpreted over here. Let me make the following statement. For many years of my life, I was a licensed private investigator. During that time, I was taught to think of an investigation as a ladder. A ladder to the truth, where at a minimum, the understanding of events that lead to a specific conclusion. An apt analogy, it's an apt analogy, for if a ladder is to be truly useful and safe, every part of it needs to be well-built. After review of the investigation report funded by the townspeople of Monterey, and in my personal and professional opinion, we have a ladder that is missing a number of rungs, and parts of it are questionable quality. Let me be clear, this is not a condemnation of the entire report, nor should it be concluded that the taxpayers of Monterey have spent their money in vain. The conclusions of the report make some good recommendations, ones that I would hope the next select board will implement without delay. Dwelling on other parts of the investigation report, especially for personal or political reasons, is akin to standing on an ill-constructed ladder and rocking back and forth. It perpetuates an environment where no Monterey employee can feel safe, where the people we count on to serve us are constantly in fear of losing their job or being harassed by members of this body, other employees, and the public. Is that what we really want to accomplish here? This town needs to focus on creating and maintaining an environment for every employee to thrive, be happy, work as a team, and understand the goal of making Monterey the best that it can be. Every employee needs to be treated with respect and, yes, dignity. It's time to move on, Monterey. It's time to move forward, Monterey. I hereby make a motion to formally end the investigation of all town employees as of today, and on May 10th, 2022, to release to the public the investigation report as received by Green and Hafer LLC on March 17th, 2022, with section D of the report entirely and permanently redacted. In addition, all itemized invoices and executive session minutes relating to this report are to be released to the public on that day. Anything less is a continuation of discord and disservice to our town. So that is my motion. Do I have a second? What? No. Yep. And I open the floor to the public. Nancy was the first one to get her hand up in the air.
I have a question. Your engagement letter states in there from the attorney that when the report is delivered from her to the select board, which is a public document, everybody, the engagement letter, it says the investigation is closed. Why are you saying it's not closed?
A, I don't recall it on the engagement letter. B, I heard, if I, if I can, let me just, I'm answering your question, okay? B, we actually reached out to council, and council said very, very clearly, the investigation is not closed.
How come the council's not here tonight?
That's a very good question. The council was invited, but they seem to have had a scheduling conflict.
I know I don't get an ability, Karen Schrefter, Karen Schrefter Blair legally. I just think it's time to move on. I'd like us to do whatever we can to end this, so for all the things that you read was perfect, and enough is enough. Let's just be like we were at the potluck. So that's one girl's opinion.
Yes, sir. Your name?
Stuart Litwin.
Okay.
It seems odd to me that you are determining one section of this, which clearly you don't agree with, is invalid or not worthy of inclusion. It's unclear to me why you wouldn't want to release the entire redacted document, as per council's advice, and allow the town to get the benefit of the monies we've expended and the investigation and the trouble we've gone to, and, you know, and make our own decisions. It seems like you want to make the decision for everyone, and only you and Justin in the room have seen this report.
And unfortunately, to add to what Stuart's, maybe not to add to Stuart, because I don't want to take words out of his mouth, but not only would that prevent people, you know, from viewing the part, and it's going to be redacted in some form permanently, but I, first of all, I don't think that we have the ability to make that decision. If it's a public document, I don't know that we have the ability to redact it permanently. And secondly, not only are you depriving, you know, people from the transparency of being able to see the report in the future, but currently, you are depriving the board from having a discussion about the potential of taking any administrative action. And that, that, you know, runs the gamut of so many different things, but to not post the meeting properly, so that if a board member wanted to take some administrative action, as simple as a letter or something like that, they're not even allowed to introduce that idea because the meeting wasn't posted properly? And yeah, Karen.
So I can disagree with that. The meeting wasn't properly.
Well, it was, it's not posted according to you.
It's not posted according to you to post the problem.
Well, and I also feel that a month ago, 23rd, 27th, so a little over than a month ago, we had this same discussion, and the board more or less agreed, you know, that's why we issued redacted copies to each individual subject of the investigation. I have done nothing since then to try and drag this out. I've been asking, I put on an open meeting agenda, when are we going to schedule executive sessions to move this forward, as we agreed on, on March 23rd? And by you refusing to post meetings, refusing to call meetings, and then when you do call them, issuing executive session notice that don't allow even the proposal of any administrative action, you're really taking over the whole board, you know? Everyone on the board has a lot to do a job, and I feel like I'm unable to do my job and even introduce ideas that I think are good because of how you've been delaying this and not posting.
Yeah, so I disagree with you. However, listen, we have a rare opportunity here. You have the town employees that are part and parcel of this whole investigation, so they don't have to, either one of them, okay? But I, is there any town employee here who is happy with continuing to go on and on about this investigation? I mean, I think that all the town employees, and they, speak up, please, want to put this behind them, and Monterey needs to put it behind them. And I understand there's, there's this, there's this need to dissect an investigation report that may or may not have relevance, but it is hurting this town, and it is hurting the employees. It is not doing them any good. Now, again, any employee here can say, no, I want this, I do want to have these individual meetings, you can certainly say it in the public over here, but I'm telling you that the reason why I wrote, the reason why I'm writing this thing is not to sweep anything under the rug or, or change the subject or, you know, or withhold important data from the public. This is something that is killing the employees of this town. It's hurting them. And my job, and your job, and Mr. Wyngel's job, should he decide to show up one of these days, is to prevent that hurt, because the people that actually run this town and make this town work are not us, it's the town employees. So this is not a good thing for town employees. You went into the whole thing on dignity. I promise I will catch you. You went into this whole thing on dignity. It is not, it is no, it is not dignified to keep on poking at this, at this investigation. I, and that's why, yes, I'm saying, let's end it. Let's move on and, and see if we can, there are some recommendations in this report that are, that are in the conclusion section, that's not redacted, that seem to make a reasonable amount of sense. The new board should look into it. We're implementing some of the things that, that were recommended for the report, and that's to move Monterey forward. The other stuff moves Monterey backwards. All I'm trying to do is move Monterey forward. Don, you have your hand up.
Go. You've made a motion, it hasn't been seconded.
Right.
So where are we? We are in a situation where you have notified the employees that today is the day on which you will deal with the issues. That notification covers that. They are here. One of them's here with a lawyer, which is expensive. What the town expects of you is to decide, discuss, and decide. That's what we're here for, to hear. That's what you're here for, to do. So each of the employees has, is not asked to, I mean, you would do them one at a time. It's not like somebody has to leave, leave the room. So I think you should get into the discussion that Justin is talking about and make, if you can, it's hard with two, but maybe you can, make decisions as the employee. That's what we're here for.
That's the goal. I'm afraid that the way that Steve noticed the meeting doesn't allow for that because the executive session notice reads, at that time, the board will be meeting to discuss the investigation report provided by Green and Hafer LLC as the investigators retained by the town to conduct an investigation regarding complaints filed against the town employee.
That covers everything, Justin. That is not a limit.
And we, we all waived our rights.
That's what we're here for. We're here for you to decide what you're going to do about this investigation. That work, that thing covers it completely, and nobody's objecting to your going forward and doing it. So let's go forward and do it.
Gary, who had it? Do you have first or last, or Gary?
Yeah. Why are you waiting till May 10th to distribute the report from the investigator? If, you know, we're here to discuss the report, people should see the report and not, you know, talk in ways that, that aren't reality. Let's look at the report. If you want us to discuss it, we'd be happy to discuss it, but we've got to see it.
Yeah, so I originally made a motion to send out the unredacted report a while back, and the board voted that down. And so, so there are parts of the report that are, that, again, I don't think are, don't meet with the standards of Monterey.
Let us decide.
Yeah, I understand that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it's just unclear to me. It seems like you want to sweep this under the rug, which I, perhaps isn't the impression you're trying to give the room, but you, it seems that you are ignoring a suggestion of both the investigator and town council in how to proceed, and it's unclear to me why we would do that. I've heard you say at meetings previously that you're not a process guy, but some things require process to be effectively handled, and I'm just wondering why you want to?
So, so I take issue with the term sweep it under the rug. There's certainly no intention of sweeping this under the rug, okay? But this, if you listen to, if you heard, the rest of the thing I said was, is that you have, look around you. You've got town employees over here, okay? They've all been damaged by this whole investigation in one fashion or another, all right? And it is not doing the town any good to constantly poke it at it, all right? And it's my job, and it's Justin's job, select board's job, to make sure this town is functioning correctly. If that cannot function correctly, correctly, if this, if these employees don't work as a team, if these employees feel that they're constantly under threat because of some investigation, and by the way, just because somebody wrote an investigation, this doesn't mean that these are true and complete words to seize the findings of one organization. So, so that, so I'm not, I'm not, and I'm certainly not saying that any of the, any of this is written, made, or may have any relation to the, to the truth. My goal right now is to move the town forward and to end the investigation. I'll break it up into two motions. The first motion would be, and then we can, we can go and talk about the, the release of the investigation papers as much as you'd like, but I'll, I'll amend my motion. I make a motion to end this investigation. Second? No? No?
So I have a question. At this time, do you think that it's legal to propose administrative action?
Of course it is.
You can propose, anything.
No, it's not, it's not written in that letter explicitly. It's not. I've been part of an executive session. It has to be written out.
They wait, yeah. And listen, you have an attorney?
Well, he's representing her. He's not the attorney of the town.
Well, look, I know, but.
Order, order, please.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to clarify, Mr. People, Mr. People. Justin?
My point being, Steve, you know, I'm prepared to propose an administrative action to the board in relation to findings of the investigation, if that's legal. I was hoping that we would have the meetings that we discussed a month ago.
I, 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 I don't, I don't think there's anything that is, that's standing in the way of you proposing a, you can make a proposition for, for that if you'd like.
I mean, you I mean, you think the notice, the executive session notice includes that? I will.
Yes. I believe the...
And employees' rights have been waived from discussing character of reputation.
I, I, I feel comfortable moving forward. Yes, I'm not an attorney, but I feel comfortable moving forward. If you, if you feel compelled to make a motion.
Well, I have a disciplinary letter that I would propose to the board in relation to the findings of the investigation. I can read it out loud if you want.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'd like you to read it out loud. You can get on the, you can get on the record. I, I will state for the record, I've not seen this before, first time I'm seeing it. Wait, before you read it, Michelle?
Well, I think Nancy will say this first.
No, I'll go.
But I will, since you did call on me, I will take advantage of this. I am heartbroken that any of us in this room would say about any of the other people in this room, any of the things that have supposedly been said and done. And I think that we can keep picking at this scab and parsing words and citing documents and hiring lawyers until we are really sick. And I think that maybe there's a nugget of something in what Steve has said that we should look at. The dignified thing, if you want to go down that road, is to just quit this now. Get the people in a room and help them apologize to each other for anything that they have done or said, and let's get on with the business of the town, with the people, as you have so clearly stated, that we rely on every single day, and just cut the BS.
Very nice.
Steve, it's Paula Hartstein. There are some people on Zoom who've had their hands up for quite a while. I'm not one of them, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. I, it's not, yeah, thank you. Okay, so before we do this, Justin, is it okay to, you're wrong, read it? Sure. You're in front of the public. Well, who has their hand up? Mike?
I do. Is it my turn now?
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. My name is Sean Mueller's. This is my first meeting, so I've been down for three years or so. So I'm about as, perhaps as impartial or uninformed as anyone at this meeting, which maybe lends a beneficial perspective. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Thank you. I heard some feedback. What I'm, what I would like to say is certainly there's a lot of emotion going on between the, the town and the community. Is there still field feedback? Do you all hear feedback?
No, it's perfect. It's actually perfect.
Okay, very good. And...
It's not perfect.
From my perspective, the only way to productively move forward, which is what folks seem to want to do, is with transparency, with, with radical transparency. And if there was reason enough to have hired a lawyer as a, as a third party unbiased participant who created a report, it seems to me that the only thing to do would be to release that report with nothing redacted, including a full and clear report for the public for review. Without that, it seems as though there will continue to be trust issues, and a desire to move beyond this won't happen. That's all I have to say.
So, so again, we're talking about two separate issues over here. We're talking about ending the investigation and we're talking about the report. I, I, I put them together on one piece of paper, but they're essentially two separate issues. First important issue, speaking to Michelle, Michelle's words and Karen's words and some other folks, is to, is to end this investigation, formally end it. And again, I, I, I make a motion to, to end the investigation. Then we can talk about the, the report itself. No, no. So, all right, we, so we hear you. Anybody else with their hand up that I can see? No?
Robin.
Ellen.
Ellen.
Jeff.
Jeff.
May I ask, for the rea, may I ask why people object to ending the investigation itself right now?
So I think one of the aspects of dignity is... 책임 responsibility for actions and making a commitment to change hurtful behaviors. And I know Steve said that not ending the investigation right now is a continuation of discord and disservice to our town, but I think that in some ways we need to confront the issues that we face head on instead of trying to just move on from them and, and, you know.
I'm named in the report. I swear, employees can follow with me if they'd like to, I swear to take, that I take control of, of one of my actions, that I promise that I will do better in the future. Everybody else, anybody else want, want to do that? Melissa? Terry? All we can, look, we're all human beings here, okay? We live in a town that's under a thousand people, right? This is ridiculous. This is a, there, you can have, I can hire 15 attorneys and have, or 15 investigators and have 15 different discussions about who did this, or why somebody did this, or who did this to me, or did I do it before, beforehand? But the idea is here, is that I think, talking specifically to this dignity issue, is that it is undignified to keep this, to keep poking at this thing. I think that everybody here, I will, since I'm named on it, I'm going to say it. I didn't act perfectly. I don't think other people acted perfectly, okay? None of us are perfect. We all make mistakes. We all made mistakes. This is a very small town, where this is a very small town hall. People work together. I've been in businesses where you've had employees, people get into arguments, people don't do the right things, they don't say the right things, they don't text the right things, and these days when you don't email the right things. Everybody, everybody made a mistake, okay? Everybody understands the ramifications of that mistake because they're going to have to live in this perpetual cloud of investigations and discussions and whatever. And I believe in my heart that every single employee here is committed to moving on from this and, and being a better person. This report, this investigator did write, gives specific recommendations to this board, okay? And those recommendations, some of them are being implemented now, some of them I believe should be implemented in the future. The idea is that that's the reason why there's a conclusion section of it, is here are the things that you can do in Monterey to move forward, to help the employees work with each other. Now, to, to, other than that, to, to, you know, to pick out one person or another, one employee or another, it's quite clear in the conclusion, which would be completely unredacted, and the conclusion, it, it basically says we're all at fault, that, that none of us, that none of us are, are acted 100% correctly. So if, if we are acknowledging that, that none of us have acted 100% correctly, and we have recommendations in which to prevent that in the future, I don't understand why that's not good enough for this board to say, all right, let's be, let's be, let's be done with it and let's move on. And yes, if you want to, want to have discussions or, over, over the actual report itself, everybody can lawyer off and, you know, you can, you can, you can have that discussion on. As far as the investigation is, is concerned, you have the people that are named in the room over here. They're here, they're actually here, okay? Not virtual, they're here, okay? All of them have to work together, all right? We all have to work together to get this town, to, to make this town work. So it's, it's not helping anybody to con, to, to keep on, you know, to keep on visiting it. And I'm not pushing it under the rug, and I'm not trying to move on to another day. I agree with me, but I'm just saying that, that I, I, I've heard from many places, they just want to, they just want to move forward. Is there somebody here, some employee, that does not want to move forward, that wants to, you don't want to move forward? Okay. So with the exception of, of the counselor, all the other...
I, I am a little confused. They want to end the investigation, and I understand that the investigation has come to a close. However, there were recommendations, I am, I have no idea what was in the, the whole investigation. I have stayed clear that I know nothing, and I, I want that known, and I could, I could have gone and said I had things to offer, I would certainly not do that, I would not involve myself, because that was none of my business. However, there were probably in there some recommendations that person A maybe needs some of this, or person B should be involved in this, and this should be undertaken. And do you mean by ending an investigation that you are not going to go forward with those recommendations that are specific to a specific employee? Because I'm sure, I, that there are recommendations that some of us needed some guidance, some help, needed something, needed some, or worse, and I want to know that by ending, you are not meaning that you are not going to follow those recommendations, which I paid for.
So firstly, I'm, firstly, I'm, I'm committed, again, I've said it many times in putting in other sessions, that we should follow the recommendations that were made in the conclusion of the report. There, there, to best of my knowledge, there is nothing specific to one particular employee that says this employee needs this, that employee needs that. It's more of a, this town needs to adopt human resources, we need to pass... They even, they call it mediation. I know it's called something else, sorry, hello.
Something.
What was it called? Professional...
You know, counseling or coaching.
Professional counseling. They make recommendations for, the reason for town employees that if they feel they're being harassed, that here are the steps that they need to take, and, and training for the select board, because, because some of us, I'll, 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 I'll talk to myself over here because I'm in the report. I tried, I tried on my own to mediate, that was a no-no, okay? Investigator said, shouldn't be doing that. Okay, so, but, but there, but there was nothing like, you know, that, so by ending an investigation, it's not, we're not going to follow the conclusion. I think they, that's why I wrote, make sure to write it down over here and will be in the public record over here, is that I think the town should without fail, without delay, they should, they should, they should go through the recommendations, and that is in the...
So as, as long as you intend to follow these recommendations and you're not going to say, by ending the report, you're ending...
This is not, this is not, none of this is entirely, you know...
And I'm sure there's, you know, something that was in there that said, you know, that everybody should take yoga or something, and I'm not going to take yoga. So, you know, whatever it is, there are certain things that, you know, could be excluded, but I, I do think you need to follow it and, and human resources is...
I agree.
...counselor of some sort is needed.
Years that, you know, that, that, I don't know, that people like a little dust up. They like a little intrigue, you know? Somebody, somebody told me in the old days in Monterey, what they used to call this place, Peyton Place, you know? And, and, well, that is, you know, great material for people to, to talk about, it doesn't help anybody. None of this, none of this stuff helps anybody. And, and all this stuff, there, again, there are, there are, it cites that, that basically virtually all of us goofed in one fashion or another, and it doesn't use the word goof, that's my word, and it, and it says, and here are the recommended, here are recommendations to make sure that, that, that it, that it doesn't happen again. And, and so, you know, to, to make, we'll, we'll read this, but, you know, to, to, you know, to write letters to people and saying, listen, I'm warning you about this, I'm warning you about that, I mean...
And it should be in your files. There are things that have to go in the files.
But quite frankly, I, since I think, I, I think in this particular case, we're all equally culpable, so what are you going to do? You going to write, want to write one report and put it in your file?
You're going to go to his file.
Okay, you're in charge of that.
I guess hopefully I will.
Uh, yes.
I have, this is Nancy, Nancy Tomasevich. I have a question in regards to dignity. I recall during the meeting that she was asked some questions about dignity, and if somebody lacks empathy or has repeated behaviors over and over again for long periods of time, what could be done to help that person? And she didn't answer. She did not give an answer to those questions during the meeting. So I'm just curious...
I don't know who she is. Who's she?
The, when they had the dignity session, okay?
Were you the speaker?
And people put up questions to her and asked that, and she was unable to answer that. So it's wonderful to have dignity, but if there's no way to end the behavior, or you have somebody who doesn't have any empathy, how do we fix it? And number two, are you following your lawyer's recommendations? You hired this independent person, spent a lot of money, people have been... What about the victims who put the complaints down that were investigated? Where's their dignity if you're not letting them even know whether or not their complaints are validated or invalidated with the hours of investigation and documents that were sent? Is that dignity to the people who filed complaints? Because they're not being...
Nancy?
It's unfair.
$16,000.
Asking, so you're asking, all right, so anyway, so you're saying that the board should make a ruling on, based on some information that some people gave to the investigator? We're not in that position to do that. We're not...
Well, you should expose the entire investigation so people can see what the findings were from this professional woman who has stellar reputation that costs the public $16,000 so they can make their own determination. That's all I'm asking.
Let me make this very, let me make this very clear for the record over here. There are some individuals in this investigation, since we're in open session now, there are some individuals in this investigation that had complaints made against them that, that were not called on to be, to be interviewed. Where's the dignity in that? There is none.
They, they filed a formal complaint?
Yeah.
No, there was complaints filed against them.
Yeah, there was complaints filed against them. They weren't able to, they weren't able to, to tell their side of the story. That's not dignified. That's one of the things that, look, and I...
Well, didn't you vote on who's going to be interviewed or not?
No, 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 not at all. So that's what, those are the types of things that chill me to the bone, quite frankly, that you have some people here that had, that had, that had complaints made against them, and have an opportunity to at least, at least, uh, uh, talk about, you know, their side of the story, and, and it's more than one person, and it, and it's unfortunate.
Are they named in the report?
Yes.
And they had a complaint against them, and they were never spoken to by the...
This is all written down. I'm not telling anybody the story over here.
Let, let, let the public see it, that, that you want to argue that.
Okay, a couple of points. Number one, the lawyer told you at the last executive session that eventually the report would become a public record. So the, the concern about people never seeing this report is not a concern to have. The lawyer has said it will become a public record after everything's closed. Secondly, consider the problem that we just have two of you here. I propose that Justin consider making a motion to have his letter issued as he wants, with you then read, not reading the letter, but you give it a copy to Steve. Let his motion be to have you now read the letter and see if you will second his motion. Let his motion be to have you now read the letter and see if you will second his motion. I gather from what you have said so far that you will not second his motion. Considering that, Justin, what's the point in reading it? Although it too will become a public record eventually, because it's a document that is part of these proceedings. But if you make that motion to have him read it and see if he's willing to have that become the action taken and he doesn't second it, then there's no action that can be taken and the only thing you're left with is, alright, then we can't agree. And that's the end of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, this is the proposal of, obviously, what I, what I think is, is the right thing to do, but I'm only on three or two, so. I can't act on my own, but that's my proposal.
So is there a second to that?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't second a.
Okay, so you're, so you can't.
No, let me answer, let me answer you over here.
You actually can't go into executive session, you don't have the votes to do that.
What?
You have to make a motion to go into executive session.
No, 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 no.
Way beyond that.
We're already in executive session.
No, we're not. No, you're not.
Well, I, we're, sorry, we're in public, we're in public.
Yeah, because it's way, that's over. So you have a disagreement, you can't act. So now it makes sense to make the motion to conclude the investigation.
You guys haven't even read the letter or not?
Well, look, so here's, but here's the point, so here's the point, I'd be very happy to read the, read the letter.
Steve, before you read the letter, Sean has, Sean's had his hand up around.
I'm sorry, Sean, I'm trying to.
I'm his representative in the executive session.
Someone, I was an employee that's named in this investigation in many places. And where's my dignity because I didn't get interviewed along with another employee that didn't get interviewed? We had some pretty serious allegations against us. And you're just kicking this can down the road. Obviously, this was a flawed investigation from the get-go because it was one-sided who they interviewed. They didn't interview all the employees. And obviously, with another employee's accusations, that the fire company was named in this also. Fire company wasn't called or interviewed to verify that any of that information was accurate. And you guys have accepted it as fact. So it's time to end this investigation, move on. You have multiple employees in this room right now that you're putting on a great show for, that they really want to go out and put their hundred percent in on your roads. So you guys need to leave, please, shut this down.
So I make a motion to end this investigation. So I mean, my, my question being, are you going to read the, my, I mean, should I just sign it myself?
Point of order, please. Motion has been made multiple times.
This is Jeff Zimmerman, and five twenty-two Main Road. And there are. Both urgently and impersonally. And we're not getting. Who is responding with his opinions to every person who's looking. But we're not getting recognized to raise alien points that are worth. I don't know.
If you have a point to make, please make it.
Well, Robin, Robin Fried I know is before me, and I know there, there are other people in, that are present, physically present.
Thank you, but my question was answered, so thank you very much. I don't need it, I don't need to raise my hand anymore.
Oh, I saw it still up, okay. Well, is the chair recognizing?
I don't know how to take it down, oh, lower your hand, okay.
Is the chair recognizing me, can I make a, a point or two here?
Melissa? This is, this is your final warning over here, okay? Let me make a point over here. If I don't recognize somebody that's on this board over here, which is forty feet away from me, and they're this big, I do apologize, it is not intentional, okay? That's the way that technology works in a town like this, okay? If there are people that I have not recognized in this, in this audience, I apologize. Sometimes I don't see you, sometimes in the middle of making a speech, I don't see anybody. So, stay, you know, stay with it. No one is, no one's opinions are being discounted over here. And yes, it is our, we, all we can do is, is give you our opinions and, and our, and our understanding of the facts and our hopes for, for the town. But when it comes to the rest of this, this stuff, you know, it's from one person, everybody has a different type of perspective.
Peter Merkett. We heard a reasonable question as to why the report hasn't been released. We also heard what I would take as a factual statement that the investigation at some point will become a public document. That is, has been countered in this meeting by public statements of people named in the report who were not allowed to speak about accusations made against them. What I don't understand is why the select board would choose to create the appearance reasonable enough that they're sweeping something under the rug instead of rejecting a report that doesn't do its job? We paid money for this report, people are accused, they don't have a chance in the report to defend themselves. Why did you accept that document? And why did you create this circumstance where you appear to be sweeping it under the rug by not releasing the report, which apparently will be public document at some point in the future? It seems obvious at this juncture that release of the report would cause people named who haven't been able to say their piece to want to say their piece, and in some cases, to have to hire a lawyer to say their piece. So.
So speaking of which.
That's what I don't understand.
Okay, so we have, yes, sir.
Hi, yeah, so, I sent you a letter on April fifth with a detailed rebuttal. This is a twenty-page report, we dispute many of the factual findings. And this is frankly, a lawyer's win case. The, the conclusion, which you're all going to see, says, if this goes to litigation, it's going to be a problem. It's going to be a problem for all of you. So I, we're fine with releasing the report as long as my rebuttal gets released as well. But what I think you all ought to avoid is a tit-for-tat, line-by-line dispute, which is what I did, going forward. You should end it tonight, and if you don't, it's just going to end up in court. And that's what the report said, and you all should see that in the report. I do, I made a specific request, though, that the board rescind, reverse its decision to accept the report as fact, because it's not fact. And that's, I, I've laid that out in my April fifth letter to you all. So I think the board should release the report, release my letter, let, you can all talk about it, but end the investigation.
So, look, can I ask, can I ask another question? You said you're, you're saying to release the report. Do you think the report was part of its redacted?
I've only seen the redacted form, so whatever you gave to me or to my client.
So on, for the record, by the way, everybody, the, the vote was two, was either two to zero or two to one. To, I did not vote to accept the report as fact, however, the other board members did. So, I'm sorry, Nikki?
So I understand that Sean and maybe some others in the fire company were not interviewed, but they were named. I would think that you could add to the report that the, these people were not interviewed and their, you know, something could be added from the select board, saying that these people were not interviewed.
So I, personally, I wouldn't touch anyone with a ten-foot pole, so. And, you know, it, it seems to be, you know, and, and this is the reason, by the way, that, that part B that I'm talking about permanently redacting, that people think that I'm moving under the rug, you know, the rug here, is, is, are the, are the, are the breakdowns of the, of the separate investigations with the separate people, okay? And that's what's really, in my mind, yes, it's my opinion, and I'm not an attorney. I am, I was an employer and I was an employee. That, that's where, if it names something, somebody like, Mr. Tryon mentioned it was him, all I can say is, it's not fair, okay? So if there's a discussion about somebody where they didn't get a chance to get an investigation, it's not fair. Why would you, why would you want to release something like, if, if somebody wrote something that I didn't personally, that didn't feel it was fair about you, Nikki? I'd, I'd, I'd say, don't, I would redact it. Because, well, but, you know, but, so, so look, we do the best that we can, we are not attorneys, okay? At least, at least the board members that are here are not attorneys, okay? And, and we, you know, and this is not, this hasn't been the case in Monterey, this is a, this is a new one for, for us. So we're, we're, we're doing the best that we can. I'm sorry, Michelle has, oh.
I still have to raise my, my point, if I may, at some point. I know you can't see me, and see my hand raised on your machine, but I'd still like to make the points I wanted to make in the first place. Jeff Zimmerman again. Would that, would that be okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we're, we're in a sticky situation here. We are a community, we're all part of a community, and we are trying to behave with a degree of dignity. At the same time, we're also an employer. And as an employer, we have an obligation to our employees. And if an employee has acted out of order, we have an obligation both to the people that were impacted by that as well as to that employee themselves who acted out of order. And that we see in all kinds of areas regarding employee behavior, at least not in my career. I think that as consultants for many employees, not as an attorney, but as a consultant, even like if your sexual harassment or something else going on. I agree with Mr. Mueller, who suggested that we should have radical transparency here because otherwise the town is left with all the questions, what is, what isn't, and nobody can judge for themselves. And it's as if one person or two people have decided for themselves whether the fact finding that was done with the investigation seems reasonable or not. Because to my knowledge, unless other people were present in the executive session, only two or three people could really know what that report said unredacted. And I think what would help, and if we believe that the town's population is generally good, good-hearted people that are going to take the report, you see the very concerns that people have. And I would also suggest that if the people who are named in the report wanted to commit something to the town, sure, as, as the attorney said a, a few minutes ago, sure, let's, let the town decide. But to say to the town, believe me because I'm telling you this, I think is a, is a stretch for a thousand people to say, well, we'll all go along with the one. I also think that if something untoward happened, and I don't know the details at all, nobody's told me the details. All I know is that on the day of, I think about employee was suspended and so at least four went. Really, that's a big deal in this town when that happens on day one, on, on day zero, when the incident occurred.
So let me work.
Then you can't just say, well, let's all just kumbaya and say everything's fine and apologizing, move forward. He was an employee and also have an obligation to make sure that the town is a safe place to work. And I think, and if it, if it was all blown up out of proportion, then you have an obligation to make sure that it does get settled down because it was blown up out of proportion, if that's the case. And that it does get settled down, and that even can occur. That's what I, I wanted to say, thank you for, for listening.
All right. I'm the only one and it gets me, this makes me disagree, yes.
Steve, you missed the conference on dignity. Justin has made a motion that you read his report, his statement, to yourself and determine whether you are willing to consider the recommendations that he's made. He's entitled.
Okay, so, so.
He's entitled to have you read them now, and then if you don't second his motion, then, then you can make your motion to end the investigation.
Don.
And at that point, he will second that and this will be.
Let me, let me give you an answer, let me give you an answer right now. No, I'm not going to make a motion to accept any letter that's written to a specific employee because I believe that all of employees have an equal level of culpability or non-culpability. So to, to single out one particular employee, but not fit within, does not.
Well, why don't you just read the letter to yourself and see if you have the same position after you finish reading it?
It is, it is written to one specific employee and not to all the employees.
Okay, so read it and then indicate that you won't second it. Read it to yourself and then indicate you won't second.
Don, I'm not going to second any letter written to one specific employee. Are you hearing me, are you hearing me?
Yeah, but you're not hearing me, you're causing this to go beyond what's.
I'm not, I'm not going to second any letter written to one specific employee because I believe that there's a, that the culpability or the non-culpability lies with all, with all the employees in the town, including myself, okay? So therefore, with that being said, I also feel that this report is, should not be a report that's been accepted as a matter of fact by the board and would make the motion to, 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 to change that, to accept the investigation, but not as a matter, not as fact. That's my motion. Second that?
No.
No?
So, so my, my question at this point is logistical. On some occasions, when we were responding to open meeting law complaints, is the only time that I can really remember it. When a majority of the board didn't agree, one member may sign. Obviously, one member cannot take official action on behalf of the town because that takes a majority of the board. But at this point in time, this is a letter that I support and it doesn't have majority select board support. Should I sign it myself or should I just not sign?
You may, you may, you are, you're free to sign it yourself.
I don't, I mean, I don't know, that's why the, the lawyer would have been helpful.
No, of course you can sign it and it's going to become a public record.
But it's not, but it's not an action on behalf of the town.
Of course, certainly not, certainly not, it is an action of, of yourself.
This is Hartstein, it's Paula Hartstein, when you have a moment, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Please, my crucial. How you will ultimately go through, but the fact that it's me at this point that it's disrespectful of you not to read just this letter. You can read it and then you have to disagree and not vote in compliance with the letter, but to not read the letter is really disrespectful.
Okay, so I, 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 I expect to be able to read the letter at some point, I have a copy of it here with me. But again, but I don't believe that the board had never, has never discussed nor ever contemplated sending specific letters to specific town employees. And, and as my understanding of the, of the investigation, the conclusions of it is not directed toward one specific employee or, or not. I understand that there are some employees. Um, I understand that there are some employees that some people here don't like or would love to turn it into something that's more sensational than it may be or may not be. Um, that is not the reason why, why we are here. And let's talk about dignity for one second over here. Imagine this, um, the, the employee that has, that has her name on top of this final written warning, um, has dedicated their professional life for 15 years to this town, okay? Imagine, imagine the commitment. I mean, how many of us have stayed in the same job for 15 years? Not a lot of us. Uh, that takes, I mean, other than, well, that takes, other than me. That takes, that takes a lot. Now imagine you're staying in the same job for 15 years and, and, you know, and, and people, you know, are saying, writing, doing all sorts of nasty things. Now, I'm not, and, and, and I'm talking about all the other employees too. Mr. Tryon, the Tryon family. I mean, I got it, you people in this, in this room have no idea of the lengths that, um, that Sean, as a, as a highway superintendent and as a fire chief, what he has done for this town. They'll never know. Um, uh, and, and you talk to some of the other select board members that have worked, that have worked for this town. I mean, they were, they worked hard, they definitely, um, when they were asked to work for the town. They saved the town thousands and thousands of dollars. But they went above and beyond, went out, built for every little thing. They're committed, fully, fully committed to this town. Sean, his brother, his father, his grandfather, may rest in peace. Um, the Tryon, um, and then, and then to have somebody send an harassment letter against him, which may or may not be valid, but then the investigator not to contact them and say, what's your side of the story? I mean, not only is that not dignity, it's not, it's not American. I mean, I mean, you, we have the right, uh, you know, you can write the case, you're accused. At least give your side of the story. Um, so, is it, so yeah, I get it, I get it. This is all real juicy stuff and the investigation and people will, will become public, as Mr. Coburn had mentioned, and people will be able to dissect, dissect it again and dissect it again. And I understand that it's probably just going to reinforce whatever you feel about, whatever employees, to reinforce your notion about it. It's not going to change too many minds. But, um, but the, the question that you have to keep on asking yourself, and I'll write it on the board for the next select word, will this help Monterey? That's the question. Will this help Monterey? Will all this stuff help Monterey? Okay, picking apart, yeah, picking apart an individual investigation where somebody was not, didn't have a chance to defend themselves.
Don't say yes.
Hey, hey, hey.
That's a different issue.
Okay, Hill, so I'm just saying, all right, Hill. You can all, some of us, you can respectfully disagree. You don't have to agree with me. I'm just saying that, that my mantra has always been, given six years on the select board of this county, and I'm telling you it's not easy, um, and other board members can attest to that. Um, my mantra has always been, will this help Monterey? Will this help Monterey? If it does not help Monterey, it should not be done. If you want to call that switching it under the rug, or, you know, or moving left or right, that's fine. But, um, this report, um, that was, uh, that was drafted by a, by a company, does not help Monterey. It gives some good suggestions, but I think it should be followed by the, the, in the totality of it, it doesn't help us. And, and all this squabbling and all these individual things that people are going to be writing to each other and writing on the community groups and, and things like that, doesn't help Monterey. This is a, this is a great town. You are always saying that we, we are 90% from perfection. We were 90% from perfection. Everything in this town, you have no idea. Go to other towns and see what they have to live through. Um, uh, we, we have the best of this about anything, and we have the best employees. And I'm talking about every single employee that's currently being plugged by the town right now. So why not? Yeah, I'm saying move forward. If that makes me a rug sweeper, then, then go for it. Uh, I think Gary had his hand up first.
My question, having not seen the report, my question is, um, was any conclusion reached about, um, Mr. Tryon or anybody else that, that didn't get a chance? Was there any kind of, uh, conclusion about their behavior? Or was it just mentioned that, uh?
The conclusion, the conclusion, my take of the conclusion was that every single employee made a mistake in one fashion or another, didn't do something correctly.
Every, all the.
There's nothing in there, if you're asking me, is there anything that says, oh, by the way, now you have to arrest this person because of this?
No, no, my question is, you know, did it say Sean was wrong without interviewing?
It said we're all wrong. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not giving you a blanket statement. I, it said, it said what I, what I did by trying to mediate was wrong, um, uh, you know.
I didn't ask that. I asked if Sean, who didn't get a chance.
Yes. In one way or another, it says I did wrong, and the other person was fine. So, um, that's black and white in there.
Since he was witness to an incident with me and he didn't get to give his statement to verify mine.
So no matter what, my name is, is furnished in this.
Gary, you're, you're, I think you're a fair person. Do you think that, do you think that's reasonable with Sean? I mean, do you, I mean.
If, if they came to a conclusion without speaking to him, no, I don't think that's.
So.
I don't think that's reasonable, but.
So that, wait, wait, wait. So that's, so that's the whole point of that section B.
The point is, if you can't, don't take, you know, one little thing and, you know, if it's 90% accurate, true, and, and reasonable, you don't throw out the report for 10% that's questionable.
I think five employees were, were, I think five employees were involved in this, of employees, and two of them did not, did, were not interviewed. So do you think, so the, so what's the percentage of that? Was it 45%?
And Sean, you're saying it reached the, uh, decision about you being wrong?
Yes. Do you think, do you think that's, I mean, I mean, look, I, do you think that's fair? Of two out of five employees.
I asked multiple times, Billy interview.
Who he put his side when he raises his hand, he should be.
All right, Don, listen, I, I appreciate your input, but we don't need a proctor. I, 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 I'm looking over there. I, uh, you know, my peripheral vision is, is not terrific. I, Sean, um, see, Justin, I apologize if I didn't see you raising your hand, but I'm looking over there. Justin, you have something to say?
No, I just wanted to say that the, uh, what's her name? Corinne Hood Green. Uh, the investigator did acknowledge that some complaints were, um.
Unverified.
Were just, like, for example, this sentence says, we did not investigate this claim because if it occurred as alleged, it mounts to a dispute between two coworkers, neither with authority over the other. So, um, some of the many complaints that, you know, didn't get, uh, didn't really get invested. I mean, they acknowledged, we didn't investigate this claim uh, because either it was too trivial or this or that. And they had to prioritize maybe more.
Venus complaint?
So generally, again, because I do have some experience being an investigator myself, that's not how an investigation works. You investigate, you, you talk to everybody, whether you think it's, it's relevant or not. Um, because sometimes you think something's not relevant and you talk to them and something becomes relevant. But it's not like there were 10,000 employees that they're, that they're reading anyway. There was like five, five employees and I had five employees. Two people were, were not interviewed. Uh, I'm sorry.
Stuart, Stuart.
Stuart, thank you.
Just a point of procedure. You've made a motion several times. It has not been seconded. Justin's made a motion. It's not been seconded. So what, what's next? How do we move on?
Well, if you, if you sit, if you stay in that chair, you'll, you'll, you'll see what comes, what comes next. And it's not a script, it's not a script to bend.
We've been talking a lot. I didn't have any more forward progress. I'm just wondering what.
You know what? Because I, because I hope that there, that at some point there will be an understanding that this investigation, at least the investigation part of it, must end. It should end.
And what does that mean to end the investigation? I wasn't clear on that.
I can, I can fill you in from what the lawyer said when the lawyer gave his recommendations.
He's giving, no, this is a big, I mean, recommendations.
Let him do what the lawyer said.
You want it handy, because it might, it might help us figure out how to wrap things up here. This is draft, and it's, Attorney Mazer recommended to Steve that after redactions are made and the reports are issued to the individuals who are naming the complaints, then the board should schedule further executive sessions to decide how the board wants to dispose of the complaints now that the board has accepted the investigator's findings. At that point in time, the board can take whatever administrative action it wants or can close the investigation without taking any action. Mazer recommended that the board should vote on some level of administrative action or no action as they pertain to each specifically named individual. So that was the only action that I was going to propose. I did. I made a motion to, uh, to, for the select board to support this letter. I didn't get a second. Other than that, I, I have no other further administrative action to propose to the board.
Great, so then I make a motion to close, to close this investigation and, and perform no action because this letter is not going to get, it's not going to get a, a second from me. Um, and, uh, since this is the only letter that you're proposing, um, that we close the investigation. Um, and, uh, and yes, we can have a, we can have a further discussion of the, of the, of the release of the, of the investigative materials.
Well, I don't think, there's no discussion about the release of the materials. What's a public record with no exemption is released and what is exempted?
So again, I would make a motion, then we close this investigation. Um, then we close it without, without, uh, any action, uh, and, uh, and then we move on.
I'll second.
Oh, yes.
Well, there's discussion.
Oh, there's discussion.
Because it can clo, or it can close the investigation.
Who is, who's first? Jerry?
I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have three people on the executive clause that can come to a decision so we can break this tie.
That, that would be sometime next year, okay, so.
Well, if we're going to do this all night, it's going to go back and forth. We're not going to get anything done anyway.
Actually, 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 um, I did get a second, so we're actually going somewhere. But, um, but, uh, Hill.
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
So I vote yes, to close this investigation without findings.
Without findings?
Yeah, without findings.
What do you mean without findings?
I mean, as Attorney Mazer, you get, uh, a, a proper, an option, you can close it without finding.
Innocence, okay, attorney innocence.
No, no, uh, no, uh, no, it was, no, um, it was, it was made, uh, town council, uh, made it out, gave, uh, as a, as a possible, uh, I mean, to close the investigation without finding.
That's not, in what I read, that's not.
Without administrative action.
Without administrative action. There we go.
What?
But that, but that did not pass, so, and since that's the only administrative action that you proposed, and that one did not pass, then I make a motion to close this investigation without administrative action. In the name of moving the blank on.
Well, it's just too bad that the attorney is not here because I'm trying to go based on my notes of what the attorney said in the last week.
So attorneys are people too, as someone can attest to that. Um, they can make recommendations, however, that attorney doesn't live in this town. We live in this town, you and I, okay? This is not, this is, this is not good for everybody. And that is why, and that is why, we can talk about the dissemination of that, of, of, of the, uh, of the investigative, of, of papers and, and what have you. Um, but I'm talking about just ending the investigation without administrative action.
Well, you didn't even read my letter, so I'll give you the chance to do that, and.
Okay, then why don't we read your letter?
Why don't we move on to the next objective?
No, 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 so, we're, the.
You voted.
Not seconding your motion.
He seconded already, and Steve voted yes, awaiting for Justin's.
No, he, he changed his motion to no administrative action and just, just paused. He didn't second that motion.
Look, I'm not going to get into parliamentary procedure over here. I'm making a motion again anew that I, that I make a motion to end this investigation with no administrative action. Do I have a second?
Well, um, I, I don't, I don't know that this is no administrative action, even though obviously it's not carried by the town, it's not on behalf of the town.
It's not administrative.
It does, it does bother me that you didn't even read it and give it.
Justin, I promise I will take it, I, I, I will take it home tonight and read it.
Yes, so.
I promise I will take it, I will take it home and read it.
At the time that we've really decided we're not going to take administrative action, I definitely give us the, I think, so.
So you'd like me to sit here and read it? Because I can, I'll do that. I'll, I'll sit here right now and read it.
Please, please, Steve.
Okay, I'm reading it. I'm reading it, okay. So Mickey doesn't, 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 or, 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 everybody can take a bathroom break or, uh, whatever. I'm just, I'm all ready.
That sounds fine by me. So, please. Yeah, yeah, can we go on, please? Uh, probably not, but it depends, you didn't have a tag, you tell me what it had now. Okay, because a lot of them, and around Mother's Day, they're going to be beautiful like this, but it will change this, and they'll be fine for one year. And then they'll probably live, but they will just, um, when it blooms, let's take a picture.
The report doesn't get released.
Okay, take a picture.
Right, it cannot be released either, because they, they're not very.
No, did I, did I read it, what it said?
According to the engagement letter, you best, yes, that's what I like to watch.
No, not according to Attorney Mazer.
Probably when you have meetings with people individually, from what you read there.
Mickey, you're not in a party.
There's a lot of electric.
I told you to pray.
I'm not getting illegal, I'm all, all of that.
Oh, what a great idea. Yeah, I, I respect. They're just so happy. Yeah, Mark, yes, we, if I could get him before the, the Easter, which kind of wasn't Easter yet. That's how, how beginning just the March, you know? We were pleased. Oh, God, of course you think that, you can sleep pale on this all the way out. It was insane. It was insane, but just give my love panties. Yeah, but I, 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 I'm so beautiful, you know, just enjoying it, you know? What I'm gonna say.
I read.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna use that. I'm gonna use that. Are we back in session?
Yes, so we're, who, we're back in session. Uh, you can tell the people in the, in the lobby, we're doing, finish up with drinks. Flicker for lights. So. I have taken time to, to read this, Justin. Thank you, thank you, Michelle. I'm thinking, I'm reading it. Um, a lot of this written here reflects your specific complaints against, against Smith No. Um, and I understand that, that, that there's some, there's been some disagreements or disharmony between the, the two of you. But it, 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 it's all written about, it's generally written about that. Um, and I'm not discounting it because I wasn't there and I wasn't part of, I wasn't part of any of it. And I, um, and it's, I think it's, I think it's hard when, when you feel that somebody is not respecting you or respecting others. Um, and I, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, um, with it. But, um, but it, it's, I, I, in my opinion, it is, it, it actually makes, makes sense that you signed it because I think a lot of it has to do with your, with, with, with your understanding of, of what went on. So I'm not discount, I'm not dismissing it, um, but what I'm saying is, is that, um, you know, uh, there are some letters like that I can write to other employees and there are people that disappointed me over the years. Um, but, um, but again, I, I, what is, what ultimately is, what ultimately is, is it, uh, besides catharsis, what is this, what is it, what is it accomplishing? Um, I think that, um, that, um, and if you want to talk specifics, I, I believe that, that it's No and it's Walker. I think this was the, um, the, um, uh, should attend personally, um, train, uh, I don't know. What is the word called? Professional mediation. Professional mediation, but it's another word.
Coaching.
Coaching. That would certainly be a recommendation, because I think that they're both valuable employees in town of Monterey, and I think that they need to work out some issues. And I think, I think that would benefit both of them. And because I have been in town hall, where there's been a noise between them, and that's when they're both looking for the town. So, so, you know, so I think there are more letters like that that could be written to other people. I can totally get where you're coming from, I think it's appropriate that you alone sign it. And because it does reflect your feelings on it, and it will be a public document, and it can go in the votes of employee records, because this is your thing. But as far as having the select board make a determination based on that, kind of trivial, I don't even think we're equipped to do that. But second of all, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to sing aloud for an employee. But I have read it, and I do understand where you're coming from. And it's not gonna disappear, or it'll be swept under any kind of rug. It will, it will remain. So with that, with that understanding, I think, again, I think it would be the best for everybody involved to move on and to move forward, and that, in this case, I reiterate my motion to close this investigation without administrative finding. So that we can move on.
I would, I would like to be able to speak to town council prior to making that decision, because I don't know that letter signed by one select. I understand that it's not official action on behalf of the town, but I'm not sure that it's not administrative action, so I, I don't...
Administrative action is the action of the administration. It's personal action or individual action, it's action.
Well, I wanna hear, I wanna talk to the town council, and I think that they should have been here today to guide us through the process.
I agree with you a hundred percent. But I agree with you a hundred percent. But this is not, this letter does not constitute administrative action, it's written by one person, it constitutes individual action.
But you can't even act as an individual. So, and I would like to speak to the attorney to clarify, to make, to make sure. I mean, like I've said, this is the only administrative action that I would propose. I wouldn't, at this time, you know, propose any other administrative actions related to the investigation. But I would like to speak to the attorney to see what happens when I propose administrative action and it gets no support. Is it, you know, is it even, what does it mean?
Justin, go ahead.
Just reword it to say, an action taken by the full board, how about that?
Say, you moved to close the investigation. You don't have to add that phrase, and he can have one view it, you can have another view it. You don't have to have an argument over it. Just move to close the investigation.
There we go, I move to close it again. Second.
Like I said, I would speak to the town council, who should be...
Justin, I think should be happening today, town council is not able to, is not able to be here. I'm moving to close the investigation.
Can I ask a question?
No. Sorry, I guess I'll go.
Justin, I have a lot to say, but I won't say it. I just want, can I ask, what is it you're worried about?
So, when we met with the attorney on March 23rd, when we received the report, they laid out a process to follow, and we didn't really follow that process. And Steve didn't call the meetings that we, I thought, I don't know that we necessarily agreed to call, but that the attorney recommended. And we have town council for a reason, and we're losing town council. I don't know exactly why, but maybe in part because they recommended how to deal with the investigation, and the select board didn't call those meetings. And so I would like to speak with town council to make sure that things are correct.
You really think a town council resigned because they didn't get the meetings that they, that they wanted to? Listen, Justin, you're in charge, we're in charge, select board's in charge. We are the executive of this town, for good or for bad, okay? We make decisions on how we want Monterey to work. If we would like to move on from an investigation that clearly has the interest of the public, that clearly has a lot of hurt feelings, we wanna move on from that, we have the power to move on from that. Regardless of what an attorney says or recommends.
Don't tell me that you're rushing to move on, because it's been over a month since we agreed to call more meetings, and only now have you finally called a meeting. So I have not been postponing this or dragging this out. I put on an open meeting agenda three weeks ago to discuss this. So I am not the one dragging this out, but I would like time to speak to council to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And that's that, and I don't wanna entertain any more motions on that stuff.
What do you think about, what do you think council will say? They'll say, well, we made a...
I don't know, but I wanna speak with them, and no one can say that I tried to drag, no, Steve, no one can say that I tried to drag this out, because three weeks ago, I put on an open meeting agenda to schedule this meeting, and you didn't post the meeting, and you didn't notice the meeting. And I have not tried to drag this out, but I do wanna make sure that it's done the right way. And I would like to speak to council, and so we move on in the agenda, because I'm not gonna entertain any more motions.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make the motion one more time. And I make a motion to close this investigation, but in Monterey, it's moving forward of the employees.
Yes, sir.
Well, the letters are addressed to Miss No, can we look at it? Maybe we'll just agree to stick it in the file. But can we read the letter? Can, can Miss No and I read the letter?
Justin, you have any problem with that?
I think it's a public document, but I don't know that that relates...
But then you wouldn't need to talk to council if I'm willing to accept it.
No, he wants to talk to council, he has it right.
Well, you know what?
We can end this, we want this to end, we don't wanna keep dragging it on.
So, if, if...
We want transparency.
If this particular, have this, all right, so here we go. This particular, this written down, this particular employee, this particular employee is okay with it, then... Well, there, what, can we get any counsel? Go ahead, read.
It's a public document.
What could be the problem?
There's no legal counsel here to protect the town's liability.
I'll try to hell out of you, yeah?
I do, I wanna ask Justin a question. You just read from your drafts and note, notes on 323 about what the attorney suggested, is that correct?
Yes.
And there was a menu, wrote different things, if you wanna go over them with me.
There was really only one path forward, which was, which was meeting with individual subjects of the complaints and offering them executive session and deciding on corrective actions such as administrative action. Unfortunately, you know, that's just what my notes...
You read something else before, you read something about, you can or cannot take administrative action, can you read that part again?
At that point, the time the board can take whatever administrative action it wants, or can close the investigation without taking any action. Mazur recommended the board should vote on some level of administrative action or no action as they pertain to each specifically named individual.
Okay, so it seems like the lawyers have given you freedom to do what you need to do as our leader. And I'm really baffled why you think you need to go back to, what the lawyer said, it's not all that clear to me, but it's pretty clear in the sense that the power is in your hands and not in their hands, that you could decide what to do.
No, town council doesn't by any means, you're right, the select board makes the decisions. But you have council, look, when people, when people feel that they're making a decision that has legal ramifications, they speak with council. And right now, I kinda feel like I don't have, like I, what's the right word? It's like, I'm, I don't have, it's reassuring to have council say, yes, that's the right, that's the right thing to do, this is how to do it. And it'd be like, you know when people go to court, and if they're, they don't have enough money to afford a lawyer, like they have to be offered a lawyer by the state? So I feel like I'm that person in court without a lawyer. And I'm not just that person, me individually.
Justin, I hear you.
The actions, our actions...
I hear you, but your draft says that the power is in your hands.
The actions that we take are on behalf of the town.
I understand that.
So I feel like, on behalf of the town, I'm that person in court without a lawyer to reassure them.
Okay, so now, so now let me...
So all I want is, you know, speak, have the lawyer, or I can speak lawyer. These are my notes, right? So I listened to the audio and wrote down notes, what if I, you know, missed a word or something? These are just my notes on the...
I'm with you, so now, now let me take the other side. And if we keep postponing this, there could be retribution and legal action against each of the individual board members, and the board, and the town, if we drag this out in what I personally know to be a biased and horrible investigation. I'm gonna be real blunt with you.
That's your opinion.
I don't wanna drag this out, I've been trying to get together meetings for a month. I've been checking on availability, I put on an open meeting agenda, schedule executive session. I did that, I think it was three weeks ago. I've been really trying to move through this, but I do wanna make sure that it's done the right way, and I do wanna make sure that I consult council.
Okay, just remember one thing, there are 25 people here in this room, and another 50 or so on the board.
Yes, so, he needs to do it by his head.
I'm not asking you to be my representative, Nancy, to please butt out. If we have to, we'll convene again. But this is a real bad show for a town that has come together to move on, the way Steve said. Not to find right and wrong, not to do anything other than move on. And it's time to drop it, and let's move on. The consequences could be extreme around here.
And there's no, there's no legal, there's no, there's no...
Don't double-talk me.
Hey, 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 please, there's no, there's no legal...
Steve.
There's no legal, there's no legal downside to closing this investigation, nothing is being...
You're not counsel though, right? Like, I wanna hear that from town, from town, council that would change it.
What would be the possible downside to closing this investigation?
You just want, would you go into signing a real estate contract without a lawyer looking at it first and giving you advice?
I'm not, I'm not making...
And it's not just me personally, it's, you know, on behalf of the town, to make decisions without consulting council. I mean, can we just drop it and move on?
We make decisions on the select board all the time without consulting council. Council thought it was so important, that this meeting was so important that they...
That they didn't come? Yeah, so, so they offered to come two weeks ago, so I don't know why they offered to come two weeks ago, and now they're not here.
Because the thing is, this is very simple, this is very simple, it's not complicated.
Can I ask a question about the two weeks ago? So the two weeks ago, you were supposed to send out the notices to everybody. How come they were only to me, and how come a Berkshire County sheriff officer came to my house? And only my house?
I don't know.
So, that's why that meeting wasn't held, Justin, and that's why we're all here tonight.
Yeah, so I didn't serve the notices.
So, so, by the way, so, and what it was, was, actually, you had board members that were not myself, were you.
And you didn't serve the notices, and so we didn't have a meeting.
Yes, actually, I was sitting in, I was actually sitting in the town administrator's office, producing those very notices when, when John Wingo went ahead and sent a notice using his name without his authority to post an entirely different type of notice. So if you have anybody that you should be cross with, it should be Mr. Wingo, not, not me. Because we were literally 10 minutes from sending out those notices when he sent it out. And it's all documented, and it's, and that's probably one of the reasons why town council is not very happy about how it proceeded. I admit that it was not done, none of it was done, none of it was done well. And again, that is the nature of Monterey. We are very imperfect people, all of us. And that's the reason why, you know, I know it, I know it's, maybe it's too simplistic, but the idea is, this investigation has, the report came out, good or bad, or indifferent. Employees have spoken, happy or not happy. And it seems like the majority of the people at least here want to just, want to move on from it. And town council, they're never going to say to you, by the way, keep on holding, keep on holding out, and maybe people are gonna get... They're not gonna be, they're not gonna give, there's no advice that they, that any legal counsel can give you. And by the way, if you close the investigation, and town council says, oh my God, you should have kept the investigation open, you can go back and reopen the investigation with the, with the, with the select board, with the select board vote.
Oh, would you vote for that?
All right, now, Steve, you're a good third point, you first had to get it up with that.
So tomorrow, on, tomorrow will be six weeks from when we receive the report. I have not been pushing it off, or postponing it, or dragging it out. I just wanna speak with council, I've actually been trying to move the process along, and so I don't think it's on reasonable request. Can we move on, we do have another arrest of the...
Right now, well, right now, we have the ability to put an end to this, there's no reason to keep it going, yes.
It's been 10 months since this started, don't you think that's long enough, Justin?
Yeah, and so I've not been trying to push it off, I just wanna speak to council.
No one's accusing you of that, what we're, what we're saying is, you've got a lot of concerned people here that want this investigation to end. It does not serve the town well. There's, you yourself have found a maximum of one letter that possibly could be produced based on it. So that means that there are letters that are not being, that are not gonna be produced. If there are no letters, what's the point of having individual meetings with individuals to tell them that they did a bad thing? It doesn't serve, it doesn't serve the town, it just perpetuates. I'm not saying you're dragging it along, but I'm just saying, as long as the investigation is up, no one's gonna be, no one's gonna be happy. Not, not no one, but there are some people...
Steve, may I speak?
Question to...
Can I?
One second, one. Just one second, one.
One second, please. So, so I'm one of those people who really desperately wanna move on. I would like to see some commerce work to this town, add some dignity, add some trust, and some goodwill that we're demonstrating to our employees who are so important to us. What I do see is that Justin is not feeling comfortable moving forward on this. Why, why, is there a way that we can perhaps even try to contact the town council now? They're not here, but can we call them?
I have the number, it's on my phone, is my phone to my trust? I could, I, I...
I'm trying to address your concerns, Justin.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, I don't know, I, you know.
I don't know who was first.
Wait, 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 why, why do we resolve this? You wanted to take a break and get to your phone?
No one's trying to keep you from town council. It, they, they knew we're having a meeting, we gave them, we gave them the link, if they wanted to be virtual, if they couldn't make it...
What I'm concerned about is when I, when I asked Attorney Mazur if he would get a meeting two weeks ago, as the board agreed that I should ask him, he said, yes, of course, right away, and he was gonna come out. So it seems like the type of meeting that you have town council for. It's really not a huge request, I don't think, you know, I, I'm not trying to drag it out, just trying to do it the right way. Like I said, if you're in court and you don't have a lawyer, you're offered a lawyer. I'm not only acting on behalf of myself, I'm acting on behalf of the town, and I would like to contact council for that.
So, so go get the phone, and let's try and call.
Oh, I mean, I can.
Okay, so let's try.
If attorney, if Ryan PM, I'd be surprised.
Okay.
It'd probably need to be filled in.
I can call.
Okay.
Yeah, call, listen, I mean, again, anything that we can do to move the town forward, we can give it a shot.
Hey, Chris.
Oh, sorry. Take a break.
We could be in Ukraine and really.
Just saying.
This is my answer, you pick my cell phone. We're gonna session on the call you back.
Something was asking privately.
Well, I have a separate issue. I was wondering if I should come back another time.
No, I, I, I think, look, Steve, you know, can I just? Contact counsel, see if they can either be present at the next meeting or I can just speak to them. I don't think, you know, I don't have any crazy questions other than is this being done the right way? I think it's a very important thing to be done the right way. And then, um, we can deal with the rest of the agenda, including Mr. Grisquel.
He said that he wants to move on, he's not gonna second it. How many times does he have to justify it?
Gary, Gary, you have, you have, you made your point.
That's my point, yes.
I remain silent this whole time and I, I have one thing. I beg you as a group, and I understand completely, Justin. But I beg you to put this matter to bed by town meeting. The town expects it. Whatever you do, you need to finish this by town meeting. It needs to be done. I beg you.
I, I don't think there's any reason, you know, look, I've al, I'm always in favor of calling more meetings. I don't think there's any reason we can't call a meeting for Monday or Tuesday. But we have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. I've never been postponing or pushing meetings off on this. I've gone to great lengths, including putting on, just scheduling a meeting on open meeting agenda to get this moving along. And so I'm not gonna push it off any further than I have to. I just wanna speak with town council.
You can't look, have a meeting on Tuesday, because you have a meeting with the finance committee on Tuesday.
So we couldn't meet right before then or right after that meeting?
Well, that's, that would be up to you.
Yeah. So a meeting for Tuesday would need to be posted on Friday.
Could we address Mr. Grisquel? Wait, 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 well, let's just finish this, I'm sorry, one second. We'll get to you, I apologize.
I can cover.
No, no, no. No, it's, it's fine. Michelle, when is the meeting? On Tuesday?
Tuesday at six, probably carrying.
So we can do, we can do Tuesday at, uh. Five? Is that okay with you, Justin?
Yeah.
So we're going to, we're going to move this, we're going to disable the rest of this discussion until Tuesday at five. Are we going, everybody, are we going to deal with the rest of this? Yes, we're going to deal with the rest of the agenda, however, since we didn't, we're in executive session, we don't have to go back into public session. Although I do. Although I, yeah, yeah, wait, wait, wait. So I do move that we disable item four B for the, um, for the next, for the Wednesday, the May fourth session. Oh, two minutes? Uh, no, it's the purpose of it, it's being executed session minutes. Yeah, um, so we've enabled four B, we get second. Yep, seconded, we want to disable it.
Yes, uh, seconded, seconded, yes.
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 I vote, so I move that we address Mr. Grisquel, who's here, um, that's new business, item number six. Okay, you're, you're on, sure. I'm David Grisquel. Everybody, uh, if you wanna talk, you guys talk in the lobby. All right.
This is Tom Davis, Grisquel, 402 Main Road, and just up the road. I've been cleaning my property and, uh, I noticed, uh, there's, uh, I have a culvert inside the property. And as I was cleaning the bank, there's a fan washout and, uh. So I was wondering if, um, if I could have some, uh, stone put in there to kind of repaint the bank? And also, uh, create a gap between where the guardrail ends and where the telephone pole is. I think that there might be a picture in there showing that. But it's, it's where the same washout is. So I was wondering if I, uh, section of guardrail.
Okay, so we have, we have, we have the director of operations here.
Yeah.
So let's, let's include him in the conversation, shall we?
Yeah, sure.
He's a professional.
Yeah.
We are merely politicians, uh, the hunt. So, the request, Mr. Grisquel is requesting, have you?
So first, the, the first thing here with the, the issues that, that, uh, at the property there. All combined together, the only thing new in this whole situation is me. Okay, uh, so just pointing out that some of this stuff's been going on apparently for, for quite some time. Mr. Grisquel and I spoke a little bit earlier this week, we spoke a little bit last month. At that point in time, he'd asked me about a couple of trees there. One of them, um, the tree company that was working, our company, that came down, was a big, long dead stump. We have been working on, on, uh, you know, addressing his concern. Kevin stopped by there today, I don't wanna get, speak for him, um, to look at a couple of trees. My concern for taking two trees out, originally I thought. Based on my experience from last year when we did bring stone in with Sean. Was that we'd just be able to drop the trees over the bank and deal with them?
But, so let me ask you, I'm sorry to interrupt. So the wa, but is the washout, the washout is connected to the trees or the?
It's near the, it's part of the whole thing here.
It's, it's part of it, it's near the telephone pole.
Okay, and is it your land or this is town land?
Well, it starts from, from the town and it goes on to my property.
So the, the water that's coming out of the culvert is, is there, that's, that's off the highway. That's coming out of a culvert that's connected to the catch basin on the opposite side of the street.
So there's always gonna be water flowing.
Oh, absolutely, yes, but the, the new, the part that I was speaking of, uh, is near the telephone pole. I'm not sure if I, uh, if it's in that, yeah.
So there seems to be like a washout near the telephone pole, does that, does that?
Yes. I don't know if that washout came from, all from the highway though.
Well, I didn't wanna, you know, mention it, but, uh, the actual water department, I was there working one day. And, uh, I didn't even know there was a water main in front of the house. So I'm walk, you know, working down below and I see this muddy water running down. And, you know, it was a sunny day out. So I run up to the top of the hill and it's the water department, it's got a pipe which goes, you know, right near the telephone pole. And I said, hey, what are you doing? You know, and, uh, he said, well, you know, I'm flushing the water main. I said, well, you know, it's not really an issue, but it's washing the bank out, so.
Okay, so you're, in your view, it's really the flushing of the water main that kind of, that kind of made this, made this divot.
Right, and the thing is, I, I told, I expressed it to Mark, I said, I don't have an issue with the water going there because I'm getting all the road from the firehouse down. You know, I've got like five basins that are running into the, the land. So that's, oh, but the issue is, um, I think there should be stone put in there. So if, if he has to flush it, it's not washing soft soil out.
So, has there been, in the pad, it looks like there's been, there's stone there that, that.
We brought stone in last time.
In the culvert, to fill the culvert in, yes. But, but the bank, I, I really believe that it should have the same stone, but, you know, you're the expert. You know, just to reinforce that bank. And I told Mark, I said, it's not an issue. If you wanna flush the water, you know, I mean, what difference is it gonna make? It's gonna go with the other water. It's just that, I don't wanna see the bank corrode.
Right, right, okay. So first of all, you know the, the Monterey Water Company is not connected to town of Monterey?
Well, I didn't know that.
It's a private water company. And so, um, their actions, um, were the result of their actions. They're, you know, they're responsible for, for, for that in general, okay?
I guess, I guess my point is, things were relatively stable, it seems, and something changed. Something, something's different somewhere that's causing that erosion. And I don't think it's watching help, but I'm not saying that was all of it.
Is it full, right, is it just, I mean, what else could, what else would, could be?
Could be removal of vegetation? Vegetation does hold the bank together.
No, I just recently have been clearing my property because there's a bunch of garbage down there. And those pictures will prove it.
Looks nice.
And I, all I'm doing is trying to improve my property. And, you know, it's a serious issue with this, uh, space between that telephone pole. And you can see there's a big gap. And if a car goes over there, you know, like say they wanna turn around, they're gonna end up down a steep ditch without a guardrail.
So, uh, can, yeah, uh, so can you make specific recommendations on how to? I, it looks like it's two things. First of all, uh, we have to have a discussion with, with the water company about, about flushing mains, but you, you know, but you can't, you know, you can't.
What he told me was, he said, well, I won't put any more water down there and probably five foot sharp.
Well, they have to flush mains.
Right.
They haven't necessarily.
And they, they can flush the water. I mean, the, the only issue is that I think it needs stone. I mean, the pictures will show that it's just soft soil there.
Has this, have you investigated it as far as it's?
I haven't looked at it very, at it in great detail. I do agree that the stone will help to retain some of that.
Could you, could you do a site visit and, and estimate how much stone it would need to, and or what else would need to be done? To, um, to, to fill that, that divot at the same time? Uh, at the same time, uh, I believe the, uh, the board, or actually, no, not the board. This is an operations thing. Would you, would you, um, uh, make an appointment to talk to the Monterey Water Company? I, is that, if, if it's something with the board, I'd like to give Mr. Hunt the authority to have a discussion with the water company about possible ways that they can. Perform their flushing duties without, um, negatively impacting Mr. Grisquel or, or other, or other individuals? Is that, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I just, I do wonder, and maybe it sounds like Sean would probably know about this better than anybody. But if there's all these catch basins leading into the drain, is the annual water flushing the culprit?
They had the pipe going right to the telephone pole where that water.
The, the water.
Where the washout is.
It sounded like it didn't help them.
Yeah, I took a picture of the water main.
And so then I just wonder, what's the town's responsibility in this case? And in other cases, do we go onto private property and install rocks?
So, yes, so we, to watch, in my experience, that if there is an issue that, that transcends town property and approaches on, on public property. But it is, uh, that it makes things dangerous or potentially liable, speaking of town council. That we try to, that as a town, we try to address. Obviously, uh, it's in part, we're not gonna do a job and then just stop at the person's line. But if the town, if the homeowner, uh, first of all, the homeowner is, uh, agrees, and if the homeowner, um, especially since the homeowner brought the complaint. If we get, if, if it, if it goes into the homeowner's property, that's perfectly, that's perfectly fine, as long as they agree to it.
And I don't have water going on there. The only issue I have, please put stones towards the bank where the washout is. You can see it's washed out there. And the pictures, if you think, I took a picture from, from down below. I don't know if you looked at the, the other, but, um, it, it's really a Stephen Bankman. I'm just, if someone turned around, it was out of town.
Right.
And backed up, there's only like a few logs that are holding that, that would stop the vehicle.
That, well, that's how, that's what we're generally going to approach it, we're gonna approach it from a safety standpoint. That's what we can do.
Well, you know, like I said, I, I, I understand water's gotta go somewhere. I told, uh, Mark that. And he said, well, I won't put any more water there. I said, well, you can put it there, just, you know, maybe put some stone in or something. You, you can't put it on soft soil.
Right.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
So the, first of all, there should be a communication with the water company and, and operations about, about this, the purging of the, of the mains and where it goes and what it does. When we're gonna make it, we're gonna make a determination, John's gonna make a determination about how much stone or how much, what needs to be in that place. Now, this determination may also include things that you, as a property owner, um, should also do. If there are something, remember, you know, we are not just gonna stop it, we're gonna, we're gonna work with you, but you have to work with us, right?
Right, I mean, I, I've, I've got truckloads of, uh, you know, the stone brought in to try to continue to, to fill the ditch in. Because I, I wanna try to stop the erosion that's, that's been happening over the years.
So, so he'll make a recommending, he'll, he'll make a, he'll do a site visit with his crew, he'll make a recommend, he'll make a recommendation. We'll get a number, uh, just so we know how much stone we're talking about, um, you know, because.
And, and the guardrail, because I, I really feel that the guardrail is a serious issue. Because the only thing holding that, a car, you know, God forbid a stone was drunk and took a swing to the right. They, those, those logs are not gonna hold that. And, uh, you know, if it went to the telephone pole.
So I would, I would include in your assessment, Mr. Hunt, the necessity for a guardrail for some reason. You also would like to consult, um, PD, um, and get their, and get their, uh, opinion on it as well. And the board, I don't think has the, yes, Joe?
So one thing I'll say is that Route twenty three was done by the state, they assessed all that.
Yeah, right. But we can add, if we can, if we can.
If it feels necessary, yes, but it meets guidelines of the state.
Okay, it's kind of, it's a unique situation over there, because you start to get on private property pretty quick, because it's a, it's actually a driveway to, to the neighbor's house. It's in the way else it sits.
And, and that was put in mainly for trucks so I could get the, the rip rap, they call it, the, the large stone for the culvert. Over there, so I could begin, you know, filling that in.
I'm referring to your neighbor's driveway with the white fence.
Oh, the neighbor's driveway, yeah.
So, so it's really two issues, the stone and the guardrail.
Those are the only two. And Jim, uh, you know, marked the two trays that, you know, like I talked to them earlier on.
I've already determined that, that we're gonna have to hire a company to remove those trees because you said a lot of landscaping done down there now. Originally, we had talked, talked about it. My thought was that it was just a ditch and stone down there that we'd be able to just drop them over there and pull them back out with a machine. And so as well, there's some stairs and some poles and some landscaping that, that.
Well, I mean, you could drop, you could drop the trays there, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, it makes it easy.
No, it's, I don't wanna cause any damage there, there. The way it's leaning, we'd be better off just to hire a company to do it.
Well, let's, 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 provided there are trees.
And I just wanna, you know, reemphasize that, uh, I don't have an issue with, I, I realized the water mains there, I took a picture of the two things. I didn't even know they were on the, you know, the neighbor's driveway. But, uh, I don't have an issue with Mark dumping water down there, that's not the problem. You know, as long as it, there's like some type of reinforcement on there, that's.
Well, look, this is, this is a good opportunity to, to, to start a, if you already haven't had a dialogue with the water company, I don't know if you have or not. I'm sure, you know, you've tried and had a, a dialogue with the water company, now it's your turn. So it's just a good reason to begin a dialogue with the water company. Um, and they should, they should keep you in the loop, as I'm sure they would wanna be kept in the loop if you were doing something around their infrastructure. So, um, you know, work out a system where they, they, they should at least, at a minimum basis, they should let you guys know if they're, if they're, if they're flushing mains. Especially if it's near Route twenty three. So, so anyway, it's a, it's a, um, you did, you did us the service, Mr. Grisquel, because we're going to begin a communication with the, with the water company. because we're going to begin a communication with the, with the water company.
And I, I'm not trying to be a, you know, a bad person, you know, bringing up all these issues. And I understand, you know, it's just a couple, I think it would look nicer with the tray down, the, uh, that's over the culvert.
Right.
And I have no issues whatsoever with the water going, you know, because it's only once for maybe 20 minutes, half hour. I don't know how long he does it.
Yeah.
But, uh.
We're gonna, we're gonna take care, it's our job to take care of the safety issues. Um, it's up to you, the safety issues, both for you and for the general public.
Yeah.
Anything that's considered to be cosmetic, you know, it's not, you know, it's not our department.
No, I understand.
We, we wanna, we wanna spend the taxpayer money.
But, you know, the garbage, I, I showed you that.
Yeah.
All I have to do is just clean my property up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make it look nice and, you know, everything's good.
So we're, I think we're on a path, I think we're on a path to, to getting this resolved.
I'll, I'll be over by the end of the week and I'll get your numbers together for you to have your meeting next week.
Okay, good. So you understand this is gonna, is a multi-step process?
Oh, yeah, I understand. I mean.
Because I gotta get information, I gotta get information from him.
Right.
Or what's gonna get information?
Right. Well, I just wanted to come to the meeting and, uh, you know, show you a few pictures so that way it's not like I'm just explaining something to you, you can actually see. And then with Jim looking at it, you know, I mean, Jim's called me back and, um, you know.
Yeah, okay. Just a quick disclosure, I don't foresee any conflict of interest, but my father does work for the water company. I just wanted to make that transparent.
Well, you're not gonna be talking to him, he's gonna be talking.
Yeah. No, I just, I, and I don't foresee any conflict, but I just wanted.
And I don't, I just wanna say again, I have no conflict with anything, you know, with the water company or nothing. They can continue to flush water if it's once a month, whatever he, he does it on schedule, as long as there's, you know, it's not on soft soil.
Okay, well, yeah. All right, so we hear you, we're gonna take care of it. Here's, here are your, here are your pictures. Well, thank you very much, thank you for, thank you for coming. They're gonna, um. Okay, so, um, so.
When are your guests to share?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna do. I, I wanted to save Jerry.
The fire commission has voted to accept a gift of a bank to be placed on the town beach. It's gonna be a similar banks to the one that's there. It's granite, you see the one that's there, the one that has a shamrock on it. It won't have all that, but we voted to accept that gift. And now we're asking for the approval of the law.
Okay, so this is entirely at the town beach? Does it interfere with any right of way?
Nothing.
Um, does it interfere with public safety at all?
And it's gone before, this morning I filed before the conservation commission to have it accepted. So nothing will be put in without the permission of the conservation commission.
Okay, is there any, uh, since we have the fire chief here, is the placement of this bench gonna interfere with any kind of emergency vehicles or any kind of, uh, should somebody decide to take a header into the lane?
I'm unaware where it's going.
It's going next to the raised garden. If you've been to the town beach recently, you'll see these two by twelves that are set up by the pollinator committee where there's gonna be a raised garden.
You know, it's a short section, a split rail.
Short section, a split rail?
Can somebody put a stake or a, a hone on it location and just so that the fire chief can assess that?
The fire department at times does drive through that gateway and come down on top of the culverts to draft water, so.
So you want me to do it anytime? I just wanted, can we just have a acceptance of the gift and then the placement? Can be determined at a future date? We just want the.
Yeah, so I, I, I can make, I can make a total combined motion if you'd like. Um, and basically, the motion is to accept, it's not only to accept the gift, but to, um, to approve the placement of, of, of the, uh, of the bench, providing that be director of the emergency services.
I can meet with you anytime because you.
And direct her operations.
And evidently you wanna see where the pollinator group is putting their raised barrels.
Good idea, yeah.
So, you know, I can meet with you anytime.
So can I get a second on that convoluted motion?
Yeah, well, frankly, I think all we have to do is accept the gift, partly on behalf of the town. We don't need to micromanage other departments. So I'll second the motion to accept the gift.
Fine, then I change my motion to accept the gift and you. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, can you get this accepted?
Thank you for the donation.
But still, I would want, I wanna make sure that it doesn't. And we don't wanna, we're, where, where you can't get, you can't roll it.
We have to have this approval and we have to have the approval of the conservation commission also.
All right, well, I wasn't.
The parks department's been good, especially those commissions, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and Nick, I'm pretty low.
Want me to call you? You wanna go ahead, Chuck?
Um, hey, uh, let's see, is there anything? Uh, let's do the conservation commission reappointments. Um, I have the number four on new business. I make a motion to accept the re, conservation commission reappointments of Chris Flair and Tim Lovett. Do you have a second?
Through September 15th, 2022.
Through September 15th, 2022?
Second.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Um, let's do, uh, um, uh. New business, town administrative items, the shared human resource update, which is part of what we're talking about.
So you want to know the date?
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna go to the dates here. Um, May 9th, we will be having a follow-up meeting to hopefully finalize the intermunicipal agreement. Um, the ad will be going in the paper on Monday, and we are scheduling interviews on May 26th.
So if we hire somebody to move it up to human resources, which may help. Um, uh, number three, review swap shop committee, interested parties, I know everybody's here for that. So we have, is it just one?
So, and, and we, the transfer station committee recommended that we form a swap shop committee. But it seems that people just wanna volunteer to serve at the swap shop. So I'm wondering if we can't find someone who's really interested in organizing the volunteers? And then maybe you can do like one day a month or one, one. But, oh, you know, these people reach out and they say they'd like to help at the swap shop, which is great, but I don't think any of them wants to sign up for 18 hours a week.
So I learned today at the committee meeting, apparently Sandy, I think is her name, is Dave's sister. She's interested in being up there, she just didn't submit something formally. And I think she's looking at it maybe a little bit of a stipend, which we do have budgeted in the next year. So maybe we can talk about that further next week.
Would she be there all the hours of the transfer station?
Uh, I'd like to have Jim and I go talk to her and see what she says. I've just learned today that she was interested, so.
Yeah, like 2:30 afternoon.
Yeah.
Oh, well, okay. Well, I have seen, I did see her there this weekend and I thought, oh, maybe.
So that has been off and on, helped out with best, uh, assets, so.
She just is it. But my only que, there's no stipend in the budget per se, right? There is a swap shop stipend in the budget stuff? Okay. So that would be ideal.
Yeah, so, um.
So let us find out more information.
Find out more information, um, uh, maybe she'll even attend, um. Well, it's when, you know what? We get our, our next formal meeting, we'll, we'll have this Tuesday meeting, but we'll have a Wednesday meeting, which is gonna be at noon. First, um, and so, you know, she's used to being at the swap shop on Wednesday morning, so she can just leave there and come here. So she's gonna, she may be in town, right?
Yep, but we'll worry about the schedule and all, right?
Okay, all right, very good, all right, so that's. Um, so as far, as far as the other people, right, it does seem like, I mean, I think, you know, I accept these, these people that wanna volunteer, but it seems that they don't, that they don't really know what, when they wanna volunteer, like what particular schedule. So we'll do, we'll do, we'll see if we can get a general coordinator first and they'll, and they'll contact these people. Sound like reasonable? Well?
Yes.
Um, okay, um, since we're on a roll over here, let me, let me take a stab at the whole business. Um, review human, human resource proposals for handbook update and consider accepting the most responsive. Um, I would like to make a motion. Uh, you know, it seems like you, it seems like you and I disagree on, on, wait, wait, on, uh, there are three people that made, that made the recommendations, okay? You can column center, that, other HR company and the attorney, right? You, you know, you like attorney and column center. I like the, I like the HR person and column center. My recommendation would be, is let's hire the, I would, I would make, I would move that we would hire the column center to do, to do the report. It seems like the one that you and I both, you know, uh, none of us are, you know, jumping up and down about, um, you know, how I feel generally about the column center because they do, they do deal with a lot of towns that are much, much bigger than Monterey. And I have a problem with that when it comes to telling, when they, they tell us what to do as far as running the town because they, they only deal with big towns. But human resource issues are constant whether you have a big town or a little town. And we have, we have to follow the same laws whether you have a big town or a little town. So, uh, so I have less of a, of a problem with the column center because at least that's what they do.
I thought that, and I know I, I think we are going to interview people. Uh, I don't know if we still wanna do that, or we could also just leave it as a, a decision for the next board. Um, this, this probably couldn't be encumbered, could it? So we have to spend the money by that.
It's a special article, we can carry it forward.
Okay. Because I don't wonder if, you know, because if you, if you choose column center, but then there's a new slot board and they're the ones that actually work with them, what if, so the, the monies could potentially be encumbered in the next fiscal year?
We carry it forward.
So then what if we?
I'm just trying to get things done for this town.
I agree, but I.
On, on the board or not on the board next.
We may have an HR person hired by then and it would be moved because they would be working on it for all the five towns.
Yeah.
This was, this was a stopgap, you know, when, when we started talking.
That's actually, that's actually very good, that's actually a very good point. People, people should come in handy, he makes very good points. That's a very good point, so I'm glad that you're here. Um, all right, so if you'd like to, if you'd like to, um, if you'd like to move, to not decide on it now, that's, that's fine. Given, given that explanation, maybe you won't have, you won't have to spend the money and then we'll save the tax fare some funds. So we wanna, so I moved, I moved to, I moved to permanently table that sucker. What?
I don't wanna permanently table it.
Well, of this, of this session, of this select board, I mean.
Why don't we just not act on it?
I'm not gonna act on it. I moved to not act on it. Um, all right, so let's, uh, so good, we're done with that, reviewing and, um, mail and card possibly sent. We shouldn't have taken the second part.
There's a resignation, or two resignations.
Well, we have one.
I just said.
Yeah, Brandon didn't, I didn't get his copy of his letter.
Um, okay, so, oh, here it is. Yeah. So, uh, uh, if I, uh, to Town of Monterey, police chief and select board members, that will be resounding my position as reserve patrol officer with Monterey Police Department effective May 1st, 2022. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to serve your community. Comment for me to move on, pursue other interests as I have a life outside of police work. That will further my personal and professional development. Um, and that's, um, that's Nate, serving him. He's done a great job for Monterey, so I'll be thanking for his service here. And, uh, and I'm not saying that because he lets me drive fast on the flat. Um, so, and then the other one I understand is, is Brandon Ziegler, his last day is Friday. Okay, uh, we did give his two weeks notice, um, and he's fulfilled that obligation. Uh, he's been, he's, we've watched him grow. He started part-time at the transfer station and Sean offered him an opportunity to come over with us and, and, um, he's, uh, he's done well. He's learned an awful lot of new tricks and he's gonna take some of those new tricks with him to his new situation.
Good.
I mean, you know. I wish him, I wish him the best. He's, he's been a pretty good kid to have around. Okay, well, I'm glad, I'm glad, you know, again, thank you for, for the service to the, to the town. I know it's always tough to have somebody that you train, you know, move on, but that's part of the continuum. Um, hopefully we'll get somebody who's been trained by some other town. And I.
I think we got through a show all the way though, didn't we?
Um, so, and you don't feel that there's a, so, um, you have, uh, particularly on the agenda, you have some, a replacement in mind, or do you think you're going to keep the position open for now?
Uh, we have a candidate that, that was strong, um, for a previous position that was open and, and we've reached out to him. We've just gotta coordinate some time to talk to him. And, um, as, as time's gone on, we, a little bit of time to think about things. I, I have some other ideas in mind.
Okay.
That, that we need to, you know, we need to work out.
Okay. It's not, I mean.
It's not as critical as it was back in the fall, so.
Right, right, of course, not the beginning of winter, so, so we can, we can do this, but, um. But, and by the way, this happens all the time here in Monterey. People, people do their jobs and their jobs go unfilled and some, and those, those salaries remain unpaid and therefore make their way back to free cash. So when you're at the town meeting and somebody's yelling and screaming about all the free cash that is, that is coming in, a lot of it is because of unfilled positions that we have to raise and appropriate. But if we don't spend it, it makes us way back to free cash. So that's one of the reasons, not all the reasons, that's one of the reasons why free cash sometimes grows. Feasible moment. Um, uh, open meeting law.
Did you vote on the resignation?
Sorry?
You didn't vote on the resignation?
Well, we don't have to, we don't have to vote.
We're just accepting it.
We're accepting it, yeah, yeah, I mean.
We can accept it.
Yes. Uh, yeah, even if we said, you know, we don't accept it, uh, you still might.
He's gone anyways.
I only remember one time where somebody got fired and they said no, and they're like, all right, say. Um, yeah, we don't, yeah, we're not, we're not doing that. So, um, but if there's, if there was some comments you wanna make about them.
I appreciate everything he's done for the town and, uh, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, uh, there was a, we received a determination from the open meeting law, um, uh, that, um, um, so this open meeting law, and I'll paraphrase if you'd like, this, I, I'll, I'll try to move things along. Um, anyway, uh, someone by the name of John Weingold filed an open meeting law complaint on February 23rd, 2022. Um, alleging that the Monterey Select Board, um, which includes him, violated the open meeting law. Um, and the board resolved the matter because they find that the basis of his complaint was the board, um, that board didn't provide minutes for that meeting of November 6th, 2021. Um, however, the, um, Commonwealth of Massachusetts has determined that there was no meeting of November 6th, 2021, and therefore the open meeting law violation was sent against us as a Monterey Select Board, um, cannot be acted upon. We thank both the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Mr. John Weingold for his participation in this theater. Now, five, so, uh, we received five D and, um, and five E, uh, the town, as, as you may have heard, uh, the, um, the current town council, Koppelman Page, have, uh, given us a letter saying that there's, that they are planning resigning from the town of Monterey, um, uh, after town meeting on May 7th. Um, I did, as the board instructed me to do, I did reach out to them and ask them that it, that they could reconsider staying till the end of the month. Right? That's what we, that's what we.
Yeah.
Um, uh, they wrote back, uh, basically saying, and I, um, that, um, they'll, they'll think about it. Okay, they haven't made a determination perhaps. When you talk to them, you can, you can ask them.
And I am talking to them to ask them to come to a meeting on Tuesday at 5:00.
Right, say, hey, by the way. Being at a meeting, are you gonna stay and, and work for us till the end of the month? Uh, anyway, so, um, so we, we put out a, a notice asking for solicitations for town council. The Town of Monterey has received, um, other than the one from Mr. Pollard, that, um, that was in the last session, that the Monterey Select Board has received two responses, uh, one from, um, from Lynn Koppelman, um, who, uh, actually founded Koppelman and Page and actually presented, uh, with interviews with the board previously. Um, and he wrote a, a nice letter to the board. I don't, I don't know if I really need to go into it. Um. Um, um. Uh, giving him, uh, and then we received a letter from uh. This Denise Brew Donna M. Brewer, Donna M. Brewer, um, who works for a a firm called Mary's Harrington, um, and it's my understanding that they represent amongst other towns in in more central or or eastern Massachusetts, they do represent the town of Stockbridge. Um, but they are located in Weldon. Massachusetts.
So maybe we'll see how Stockbridge.
Yeah, so what I would recommend the board members do is read, um, two letters, um, um, and, uh, uh, and then, uh, we will we will have at some point, so read two letters and, um. I mean, do you think we should we should so look, in general, again, there should not be a gap even one hour without town council. See what's going on up here. So, um, so, uh, um, I recommend, so if 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 the current council is willing to stay till the end of the month, then you have some time. But if current council is not willing to stay till the end of the month, um, is my sincere recommendation, um, that that we schedule, uh, interviews with, uh, with these two individuals that the select board makes a decision. So you have town council when the other town council leaves. So so it gets up to that point.
You saw that right up in your.
Yeah, Mickey, I'm I'm tuned in to you.
It's your electric on. Uh, when you're doing that, when you're interviewing them, could you invite the two people who are running for that position that you're you're vacating? And they could be here and and have input on it since they will be dealing with these people.
But obviously a good initiation by fire for a new. Well, well, let's let's hope they're in the backseat.
And then you wouldn't get anybody, but that's right.
So wait, let me, so, well, what we did last time is, um, as you may be aware or may not, um, is that we brought them in, we brought them individually, um, uh, to to a select board meeting. Uh, I think they were virtual.
She means inviting Susan and Jeremy.
Oh, so so.
Susan and John.
I can only speak for myself. In principle, I would love that. In practice, I have surgery Tuesday and Thursday.
So let let me.
That's not fair.
Uh, let so.
I'm sorry.
So so you know what? Political, political, having gone through it myself, um, um, you don't want to town count. The the decision to hire town council should not be politicized. It's again, whatever best for the town. So if you have two people running, and one person said, I love this person, I love this person, and it becomes politicized. And that's not for that's not, we don't want, I don't think we want to do that, okay? I actually, I know we don't want to do that. It's not gonna be good. We want to base the board's hiring of town council, if we if we don't have time, the this board's gonna hire. If you do have time, the next board's gonna hire. Um, you want to do that very soberly, and you want to listen to what they say and how they say and how they can serve the town. And I I personally, and I I say this with, uh, great love and affection for both candidates, you don't want to hear from the candidates. You don't want to hear from the candidates because this is a decision, you're it's like you're hiring a a surgeon. I'm not gonna have my whole family meet the surgeon and then argue out. But so 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 I while I appreciate your your battle royale method of 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 hiring legal counsel, I would probably I would probably suggest that we actually do it very carefully.
Um, Steve, I'm gonna throw the following. I I looked at, um, the Mary's Harrington proposal. And I just want to offer the following feedback, um, on paper. They look very qualified. Their rates seem reasonable. The one thing I would recommend that you, um, if you can negotiate would be the rate they're charging while in transit. They can do other work on the phone. And it's a long trip. And it would be a big bill anytime.
So one of the things, so the good thing about having a connected town administrator is, um, uh, uh, perhaps she can get some uh, at least some feedback on on the one council that's serving Stockbridge. Uh, and what what agreement was made between Stockbridge and that attorney, right?
Well, yeah, and because it was like with KP two, they had an office in Lenox too, right? But their people weren't coming from Lenox.
And that's.
I think.
But they only charged us from Lenox.
From Lenox, oh, okay.
Where where their closest office was.
I'm sure that that, well, I'd be I'd be surprised if Stockbridge agreed to pay them from from from, well, we did.
Alcohol.
Stockbridge. So we we'll get a little bit more of an understanding of that because I let me know he's in Boston, I believe. Um, and he is, uh, and he he will get in the car and drive, um, if you ask him to do it.
He came to interview us.
That's right, he's he's interviewed us, that's right. So he's obviously looking for a reason to get out of town.
Did he stay over the night or did he drive back at nine P M?
I didn't put him up. Mickey? No?
No way. Not me.
Um, I don't know. I don't know. But, you know, it is it is, look, it it demonstrates, by the way, Justin, that, um, there are just a lack of people to do these jobs in Berkshire County, from accountants and treasurers to attorneys, uh, I mean, even highway people. Um, it there's just not a lot of people. So that's another reason why the employees, if you have employees and they're working, they're they're precious. Yeah, I can't we can't afford to throw them away because there's nobody behind them to 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 fill those to fill those roles. So anyway, just just keep keep that keep that in mind. Um. So, okay, so what we'll do is we'll get a little bit more information, and and at the same time, we're gonna find out if KP is willing to wait till the end of the month. If they wait till the end of the month, then the next board that should be on your gen that should be on your on agenda, uh, right away to start having interviews with with those town council. If KP says no, and they're leaving on the seventh, and then this board must act, um, to to fill that gap. We must have somebody on the eighth. I'd like to hire them for the seventh, so we have two attorneys at the town meeting. Who knows what's gonna happen there? And then we you can have your battle your battle royale.
Please do hire someone if the KP if KP's gonna step down right after town meeting. I I beg you. Don't don't leave a step out.
Without without fail. I mean, I mean. A second should town be without town council. Um, is that it?
Other, um, uh.
We could do the minutes or we could do that next week.
Let's do the minutes next week. Is that okay with you, Justin? Or do you want to get it through the?
I was really.
What? Uh, any any questions or comments from the from the public? Short questions, Tom? Nothing? Uh, all right, I make a motion to adjourn. Yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned.